You're watching GCTV's coverage of the 2019 City Council Candidate Forum with your host and moderator, Joan Livingston.
Good evening and welcome to the Greenfield City Council Forum. I'm Joan Livingston, editor of the Recorder. Tonight, we will hear from the candidates running for City Council in the November 5th General Election. They are, on my right, for Precinct 1, Vern Sund, the incumbent, and Edward Jarvis; for Precinct 3, Ginny Disorga and Tonette Green; on my left, for Precinct 9, Norman Hirschfeld, the incumbent who is running unopposed; for the two at-large positions, we have Philip Elmer, Christine Forgé, James Henry, and Michael Toranzo. Daniel Gwynn, who is running unopposed for Precinct 2, and John Bottomley, who is running unopposed for Precinct 4, could not be here tonight, but as you can see, we have a full house. So here's the format for tonight's program. Each candidate will give an opening statement. They have up to three minutes. Afterward, we will have questions, and the candidates have up to two minutes to respond. We will also go in rotation. Finally, the candidates will have the opportunity to give a closing statement. Shelby Ashline, news editor for the Recorder, will keep track of the time and let the people know when their turn is up. So let's begin with an opening statement by Vern Sund.
My name is Vern Sund, Precinct 1. What I'd like to see in Greenfield is some things that need to be done, like the honor aerobic digester for the treatment plant, which would save Greenfield a lot of money. And that's what we need to do, is save Greenfield money. And there's some other things that would bring in money, like dredging Highland Pond and making it so they could be ice skating and fishing derbies in the spring, and possibly even it could be turned into a swimming pool. And it's just, I've enjoyed being on the town council. I've learned a lot about finances, and it's something that everybody should do, because you have your hometown, and where I've lived here 71 years, you learn a lot more of what's happening, other than going to the grocery store and stuff like that. And also, you know, they cut French King Highway and Mackin property. It would be nice to have business come into town, so it'd be a lot less taxes on us as residents. And it's just, I enjoy serving on the town council and enjoy everybody that's on the council with me.
Thank you. Edward Jarvis is next.
Good evening. My name is Edward Jarvis. I'm running for Precinct 1, City Counselor. I'd like to give you guys a little background of myself. I was raised in the town of Greenfield, attended Holy Trinity School, Greenfield Public Schools, attended Paul Smith College for Forestry in New York. While at college, I was on the varsity wrestling team. Came back to Greenfield. I spent 30 years as the Greenfield Fire Department. I worked my ways up, up from the ranks of being a call firefighter, to a full-time firefighter, to a shift captain, to a captain in charge of fire prevention and code enforcement for the city for three and a half years, and retired after 30 years of service as a deputy fire chief. In those positions, I was responsible to getting back to people in a timely fashion, and I didn't keep people hanging. That'll be one of my goals, to make sure that people in our precinct are responded to in a very timely fashion. Greenfield is kind of like at a standstill right now, and I'd like to see the town council start working on moving forward on matters that matter to Greenfield, instead of global matters. I think we need to start taking care of home, and that's where I'd like to see the council go. That's about all my background.
Thank you. Ginny Disorga, you're next.
Thank you, Joan, and GCTV for making tonight happen. My name is Ginny Disorga, and if you live in Precinct 3, I hope you'll vote for me on November 5th. I recently told my six-year-old granddaughter Claire that I was running for City Council, and that I hoped that I would win. She waited for a moment and then said, "Oh, Grammy, I'm so sorry. You're not going to win. You just aren't very fast." Luckily, this important job has nothing to do with speed, but it has everything to do with my dedication and high hopes for the city of Greenfield. What I see happening in my own neighborhood, a spirit of helpfulness and wanting to make things better, is what I see throughout the entire community of Greenfield. So why choose me? I am a regular attendee at City Council meetings. I am familiar with the budget and the issues. I also am serving my seventh year on Planning Board, and I'm currently the co-chair. And I'm an appointed member of Affordable Housing and the Planning Board. Some of the issues that are most important to me are equal access for all community buildings, planning for our mushrooming senior population, affordable housing, which is a national and local crisis, a sustainable economy, and preparedness. Our infrastructure is aging. Planning, as opposed to damage control, is imperative. Lastly, I bring my skills from a career in emergency room nursing. An ER nurse knows how to prioritize. I spent years working with police and fire, and I know the importance of making the right choice at the right time. Prioritizing is a vital skill of a City Counselor. I have that skill. I certainly have the knowledge. I want to hear your voice, and I'm ready to serve. Thank you.
Tonette Green?
Hi. My name is Tonette Green. I'm a candidate for Greenfield City Council in Precinct 3. I've lived in Precinct 3 all my life. My education was in Greenfield schools, and what I learned about the world and how it works came from living in this community of people. I married Cory Green, who works two jobs at the Greenfield DPW and Stop &amp; Shop. Together, we raised our son Cory at our Norwood Street house. At age 16, I went to work at Stop &amp; Shop. My first job was being a cashier, and I went on to bookkeeper, payroll clerk, and administrative assistant. I was responsible for hiring new employees for the company, doing budget books, payroll analysis, ledgers, and inventories, and you can now find me in the pharmacy as a technician. During this time, I also put myself through college, GCC and UMass, and at 18, I became a union steward for the United Food and Commercial Workers Union. I became the head steward and was nominated to the Executive Board as Vice President and Recording Secretary. I have been a part of the collective bargaining with Stop &amp; Shop for the past 21 years. My unit consists of five local unions crossing three states, representing 30,000 employees. This April, we had one of the biggest and longest strikes in New England history. I was the strike captain at our local Stop &amp; Shop, and the outpouring of love and support from our community was overwhelming to me. During this time, I decided I would like to be more involved in our local community. I've always done some community service. I was one of the original board members of the Medical Reserve Corps. I took part in costly, countless monthly training sessions to ensure that our community is ready, if there is ever a major epidemic, including flu clinics in the surrounding areas. I volunteered to help displaced families overnight at the Greenfield Middle School during Hurricane Irene in 2011. I'm not afraid to roll up my sleeves for a good cause or fundraiser, or to walk and hold a picket sign for my fellow brothers and sisters. I know how to make things happen. I'm driven to get things done. I have set a goal to door knock at as many homes in Precinct 3 as I can. I hope tonight to share some of my economic views about how to keep Greenfield a place that attracts families, offers jobs at living wages, educates its children well, and takes care of its elderly. That's the Greenfield I grew up in, and that's the Greenfield I want to represent again. Thank you.
Thank you. Norman Hirschfeld?
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Norman Hirschfeld. In the past, I've served on the council for five years, and recently, I've been appointed to represent Precinct 9. One of my main concerns is the unequal burden our property taxpayers are carrying. Our city budget is very tight. We are faced with an ever-increasing cost of doing business in the city. This cost will only continue to increase over time to pay for rising expenses of infrastructure, such as roads, sewer and water upgrading, education, our city workers' health care, and pension. Our police and fire departments are at minimum staffing levels. Our teachers are some of the lowest paid in the state, and on top of this, we can only, we can always think of just, we can't always think of just cutting the budget of departments to get by. It's just not sustainable for the future of our city. The large taxpayers like Big Y, Home Depot, and Stop &amp; Shop do not pay their fair share of taxes. We have to begin to look at more equitable tax alternatives. I promise to continue to call, return calls, and answer emails, as I have done in the past. I also look forward to working with the New City Council to tackle various problems and issues that confront the city in an open and transparent way. Thank you.
Philip Elmer?
So I'm the new guy here, I guess, so I should probably tell you something about myself. My name is Philip Elmer, like the glue. I'm a recovering journalist. I worked for 36 years for Time Inc., 28 of them at Time Magazine, where I started as a temporary secretary in Claude and wrote my way to become an executive editor. I now write a news site about Apple, the company, not the fruit, and something that I can do anywhere. And I choose to do it in Greenfield, mostly because my high school girlfriend, the woman I took to the senior prom in 1967, lives here, and I moved here five years ago to marry her. Why am I running for City Council? I ask that myself. I ask that question to myself every day. It probably starts, frankly, with Donald Trump, this party boy that I used to run into in New York, and I just couldn't believe he got elected president. And I just think we can do better. And I sort of feel the same way about the City Council. I've watched it for the last five years. I've watched it tie itself in knots, and I think we can do better. I think I can do better. So here's my pitch. I think Greenfield has an enormous opportunity for growth right now, and I think we should be exploiting what makes Greenfield really special at this time in the Internet economy. We live in this wonderful place, and we have some of the fastest bandwidth in the state. And I think there are already software developers moving to this town to take advantage of it. You ask them why they're here. They say 500 megabytes up and 500 megabytes down. I can't get that anywhere else. So I think we should be marketing, rebranding, promoting Greenfield as the friendliest little city on the information highway, and that I think there's a way to grow Greenfield's economy without paving over its charm. I think the thing Greenfield needs most of all is money. It needs new jobs, new families with incomes, families that will send their kids to the schools, shop on Main Street, eat in our restaurants, pay their taxes, share our tax burden, and lift everybody's boats.
Thank you. Christine Forgé?
Good evening. Thank you very much for the opportunity to be here, and I think everybody here at the table also deserves a huge round of applause, because running for public office is not easy. I should know, for those of you who don't know me, I was Greenfield's first mayor, and I served the people of Greenfield in that capacity for six years. It was my privilege to do so. During that time, we were instituting a new charter, and the result of that charter is part of what you see here this evening, an electoral process for us to have good self-governance well-represented of the people of Greenfield. I'm a little bit concerned about what I've been seeing going on in Greenfield for the past number of years in regard to the lack of civility, the lack of cooperation, the lack of good communication. A republican form of government does not work unless we all agree that we need to communicate and do it to the best of our abilities. We need to put aside our differences, and we need to work to bring solid, working government to Greenfield that is responsible to people. I can do that. I have done that in the past. I'd like to see a report card on the charter. I'd like to know what people think about it, and I'd like to see what we can do to explore, perhaps amending or reviewing, another form of government for us to use here in Greenfield, if we find what is lacking here, or what is not working here, needs some other alternatives. I also, in my tenure as mayor, put together and took apart, many years, six to be exact, a $40 million budget. I think that that budget process needs much more public understanding. It needs much more transparency. It's something that everybody on the council, whoever is elected to council, can work to do that. I think we need to restore some common sense to our government, to really pick out the issues that are important to us as residents of Greenfield. There's so much on the table. It's hard to know where to go, what to turn to, but again, petty differences have to be put aside. We have monumental projects that face us, and we need to work together to do it. That's the reason that I'm running for this council. I can bring to council my expertise, my ability, my skills, and I feel very strongly that, once again, I can serve the best interests of people in Greenfield. Thank you very much, and I ask for your vote.
Thank you. And now we'll have James Henry.
Let me start by saying what an honor and a privilege it is to be in this room full of dedicated people who have the goal to serve the people of Greenfield. All of you have my admiration and respect. The fact that I am here is somewhat of a curiosity, because as recently as a week ago, I actually contemplated dropping out of this race. Not because I had lost interest in serving, but because three days after the preliminary election, I was offered the opportunity to help elect the next great president of the United States, serving as a community organizer for Tom Steyer for president in New Hampshire. I have long admired Steyer for his environmental activism and his foresight and leadership, advocating for the impeachment of the current president, Donald J. Trump, and because I consider Donald Trump to be an existential threat to the security of the United States and indeed the world, I accepted the opportunity. And two and a half weeks ago, I started this job. It's a five-month commitment through the New Hampshire primary in February. Now, there's no legal reason why I couldn't work for Steyer and run for this seat as an at-large counselor in Greenfield. I still reside in Greenfield, sleep here every night, and bring my son to school at the middle school each morning. The problem is that campaigning for Tom Steyer is more than a full-time job, and I do not have the kind of time to run the kind of campaign I intended to run knocking on doors. But as word spread of my intention to bow out of the race, people who were inclined to support me expressed their dismay. They planned still to support me, which is their right to do, as my name would still be on the ballot. After hearing these people, I decided to remain in the race and run a different kind of campaign. That starts tonight. When voters receive more than one vote, most candidates would ask their supporters to cast a single vote for him or her. But as I said, this will be a different kind of campaign, so because Greenfielders have two votes for councillor-at-large, I will tell you all that when I go in to vote, I will be casting two votes. One, of course, will be for me, but with my second vote, I'm going to be voting for my friend Phil Elmer for councillor-at-large. Over the past several months, I've gotten to know Phil, and I believe he has great ideas, and he will be a great member of the City Council. Please know that I hold all the candidates with the highest respect, and I wish you all well as you seek to lead Greenfield. I sincerely hope that even those who are not successful in the November election will look for alternative ways to help improve the community. There are always ways for people to get involved, and the city can use more dedicated public servants in every office. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Toranzo?
My name is Michael Toranzo. I live here in Greenfield. Almost my entire life, I was born here, went through Greenfield Public Schools, went through GCC, left for a couple of years in my twenties, just down the street in Sunderland. But I came back, didn't know what I was going to do with my life, but I decided, well, I like Greenfield, so I bought a house. And I'm just about completing, or complete with the renovation of that house 10 years later, after doing a pretty big overhaul on it. I own a business here in town. My father had started landscaping business after being laid off by Irving Paper Mill in '93, and so he started from scratch, built up the business, and after he passed away in 2013 unexpectedly, I decided to leave my job that I had with the state to carry on the family business and continuing to help the community members here that he had helped throughout the years. I still do that today, by myself, long hours, but I enjoy it, and I get to meet a lot of really nice people. My intention of running for government office here is, as was echoed by some of my constituents up here, they was not seeing what I think could be done with the town council. I feel a lot more could be done if it were in a more proactive manner, putting aside small differences on, though they may seem like big issues, very small issues when it comes to Greenfield as a town, or as a city now. You may have seen my slogan out there about common good, common sense, common decency. That is something people should, you know, utilize every day, I feel, and as the government's job is to do the most good for the most people, utilizing those three tenants are really important, because you have civility, along with well-thought-out intentions, and for the right reasons. And knowing what you have in the town and what you might be able to develop from the town is crucial as well. So I would like a little bit more transparency coming forward, as has also been echoed, through our council, for the people to understand better what we have, and therefore, what we can do to improve all the things that we could do with this town. Thank you.
Thank you. So let's begin our questions, and here's question one, and Ed, you will be, Edward, you'd be the first one to answer, okay? As you know, the general election will have a ballot question concerning the library. What option do you prefer, accepting a $9.4 million state grant to build a $19.5 million library, or spending what is estimated to cost $8 million to fix up the library this city has, and why?
Ah, I always draw the short straw. Anyways, glad to answer the first question. I believe that the town should utilize a new library, not the library that's there, to soak that money into a building that needs lots of work, and it would be downsized by one-third. Doesn't make any sense at all. At the end of the day, we're spending a million dollars more for money that isn't going to hit our tax rolls until later on during the year, during the process. In other words, when we're borrowing the money, it's not going to hit our tax rolls until approximately 2026. If we don't accept the grant, we're going to end up paying, it's going to hit our tax rolls the following year, because we're going to end up borrowing that money to renovate a library, and that's going to be downsized by a third. I sat there right outside of that library for 30 years, and I could tell you that it's the most utilized building in the city of Greenfield. Another unknown fact is that there's 15,000 active cardholders at the public library right now, and people often, I often hear people echo saying, "How is building a new library going to bring money into Greenfield?" Well, I can guarantee you, the 15,000 people that have active cards there don't all live in Greenfield. They live outside of Greenfield. They come to Greenfield. They use the library. They stop and shop in Greenfield. They may get something to eat. They may get their children something to eat. That's how money gets brought into Greenfield, by having a new public library.
Thank you. Ginny, do you prefer a new library or fix up the one the city has, and why?
I totally support the town of Greenfield building a new and fully accessible library. The cost of the library is going to be $19.5 million. We've got a once-in-a-lifetime chance for a $9.4 million grant. There's been overwhelming support within the town. $750,000 has already been pledged towards that library with a goal of $2 million in The new library is going to bring new growth to this town. It's going to bring people that are going to the stores on Main Street, and, most importantly, it's going to be a beautiful library that everyone is going to be able to get into. Thank you.
Thank you. Tonette? Do you want me to repeat the question?
No. Okay. I'm in full support of the new library. I believe that any public building should be accessible to everyone. I've listened to many of the people who have supported the library since inception and applaud them for all their hard work. The reality is, the cost to repair the existing library would be more than to build a new one. Believe it or not, not everyone can afford books, Kindles, or computers, and many people use the library to do research, explore medical conditions, and read their monthly magazines and newspapers. They can even get passes to museums. Libraries are crucial to our community, and they are our focal point to our downtown. I would like to point out, though, at first, when the library came out, because I do contract negotiations, I'm not a fan of package deals. And the other part of the library proposal was the Route 2 overlay. And to me, the purpose of rezoning an area would be to bring revenue into a community. Rezoning to put in gas stations where there's already existing gas stations on each exit is only taking money away from existing businesses. The same with fast foods. I feel like if they put a fast food restaurant up on the Route 2 overlay, it's only making it so people don't come into town, and that would cost us more revenue. That's it.
Thank you, Tonette. Norman?
Well, I've been supporting the library, the new library, for quite some time now. I find it really incredulous that the city would pass up a $9.4 million grant by the state. If we do this, if we vote no on the library, it would mean that we probably wouldn't get that grant again. At least, it wouldn't come around for another 10 years. So we'd be looking at... So we'd be looking at really a doubling of the cost of a new library, and we really can't go down that road. We really have to vote yes for this library. It will really make a big difference in the economy of our downtown area. It's really for the future of our community, future of our youth, and to pass that up is really, would really be a setback for the town. Thank you.
Thank you. Philip?
Well, first, when Boston offers to give you back $9.4 million of your own tax money, I think the proper answer is thank you very much, no. If your idea is you want to make Greenfield an attractive place for people to move, I think schools that work and are fully funded, great internet, and a modern library are sort of table stakes, you have to have them if you want to grow in the 21st century. I grew up in Lexington, Massachusetts, a town about twice the size of Greenfield. They poured money into their school system, and people moved to town and paid higher taxes just to have their kids go to that school. We also had this really quaint stone library that they built a big extension on the back, and it became just what you'd think. It became the place where kids went after school, it became the place where people gathered, and where the computers got used and the books got taken out. It made the town more attractive, and I think that should be our purpose here.
Christine?
Thank you. I am in favor of accepting the grant from the state. I did speak to the town council on this issue. A library, to me, is a tenant of civilized society. It's very important to the vitality of any town, to the life of the downtown. Ours is no exception. The building that it's housed in right now was built when George Washington was president, and that amazes me. I served as a library trustee for 10 years, and the building was always a problem. The library was always treated as an orphan child. It's not the case, and it cannot be the case in the society as we see it today. I understand people are worried about costs, I understand about taxes. I pay taxes too, my means are limited. What I think people need to understand is that we put this on a debt schedule. The debt schedule goes to a temporary borrowing first, then it goes to a temporary, permanent, excuse me, borrowing, which is going to play itself over a course of a number of years. So as some of our outstanding debt now retires, our library debt will come on board. I'm not saying taxes are going to remain equal, I am saying it's a good investment. The return value on it is priceless, and so I am in favor of accepting this grant for Greenfield.
Thank you. James?
As Christine just pointed out, this building was actually, it was a private residence, built not as a library, but when George Washington was president. It's a beautiful building, I love the building, but if you love the building, we have to preserve it. And the weight of the books alone is going to destroy this building over time. Phil brought up about the taxes. There are two things that are certain in life, death and taxes. Guaranteed, if Greenfield says no to taking back about $9.5 million of our tax dollars, Littleton will be very happy to take our library, our taxes, and build their library. I was fortunate to be chair of a building committee, or actually it was a study committee back in the late 90s, when we were looking for a home for the senior center and the library together. And we tried to take care of both of those needs at that time, and sadly, Greenfield said no at that time to the proposal we had down on Wells Street next to the Mill House. We've taken care of the senior citizens. We've got the John Zahn Center, it's a beautiful facility, but the library has waited patiently for their turn. Their turn is here now. You're never, ever going to get a better deal than we have right now, getting about half of it paid for by the state. And then you factor in the pledges that have been made by the business community to build a new library. It would be fiscally irresponsible for us to turn down this grant and try to fix this existing building that was never intended to be a library.
Thank you. Michael?
I am also in support of the new library. I utilize it, well, my wife utilizes it multiple times a week, brings my children there to the programs, even helps out with some of the programs there. It is absolutely fundamental to have a thriving library in the town, and ours is very, very We already know that we're going to need a fire station coming up any time now, probably, I should say, that should be a past tense statement, we need a fire station. So that's going to be, that's going to be happening anyway. We can group part of this construction in with the library. I wasn't present, obviously I wasn't on the council or anything, at the time when all of the funding was coming up and the planning for this, but at this point in time, I would absolutely support the library going forward. As was mentioned, it's as fiscally responsible as we need to be in choices in our town. This one is one that would be irresponsible to not do. There are times, as a business owner myself, I have to run my own budget, and there are times where I need a new piece of equipment, or have to put out the money ahead of time to fund a project, and though it doesn't seem like I've got it at the time, I know that I'm going to chip away at it, but if I didn't take advantage of an opportunity, then I would miss out completely, and that could be a lot more detrimental in the long run. So I would push for this to go forward. It's obviously now on the town's, the town vote, and it's going to get mine, and I hope that it would get as many as, definitely as many as necessary.
Thank you. Now, we're going to go all the way to the end of the table for Vern.
As far as the library go, I was the one that voted against it. The reason I voted against it, because we got to combine the fire station and the library together. And also, before we even moved the library, the one now has to be ADA compliant, whether it goes now or it's a couple of years takes to go down, be built into where the new library is supposed to go. And like I said, it'd be great to have a new library, but a lot of the older people can't afford it. You get people 70 years old and older that can't afford the taxes now. How are they going to afford taxes coming up with a new library, new fire station, and a new aerobic digester, and having new roads put in town, whether you have clay pipes and everything that have to be replaced? And you've got to look at the whole picture, because if you can't afford a new fire station, you're not going to be able to do a new library. Or if you can't afford aerobic digester, which is needed, you can't afford a library either. So you've got to look at the whole picture, and not just go with what you want, but what you need.
Thank you. Question two. Development of the French King Corridor is a hot-button issue in Greenfield. What is your stance on this topic? And Jenny, you're the first one to answer.
I'm on record as being in favor of development in the French King area. We need development to stabilize our tax base, but we don't know what might go in there. What many of you may not know is that for the past year, the planning board has been working on the use tables for all of the commercial areas, and the general industrial, and the planned industrial. We have added things to the general commercial, of which that part of town is in the general commercial. We have added things that were never thought of when the zoning laws were first written. We added craft cooperatives, maker spaces, and incidental sales associated with those things. We're not sure what might come in. We have a wonderful maker space that just opened on Main Street. The same thing may be going in there, but one way or another, I hear more and more people saying, we need to do something to increase the tax base.
Thank you. Tonette?
One of the things is, is I feel like when things like Safe City and Route 2 overlay come up, I think that if it becomes such a hot topic, it should come to a vote for, by all the people, because after all, this is our community, it's not just the town council's community. I do think that we really need to look at what land is available and to think about rezoning it, and rezoning it into things that are living wage jobs. And $9 and $11 an hour jobs aren't going to help pay our taxes. So we need to, like Mr. Almer said, we need to encourage, you know, high-tech and development, and those are the kind of jobs that are going to bring in the tax base that we need. So I'm encouraging that we look at the rezoning of the areas, because I know that there's property across from our Stop &amp; Shop, and the reason why we moved over there years ago was because that was supposed to be all zoned commercial, and nothing's happened. Now we've got sheds across the street. So I think we need to take a look at this, because I think it will help our tax base, and I think it'll help our community, and that's really what it's all about.
Thank you. Norman?
I was against the rezoning of the French King area. I just feel that it's too short-term, it's not really a long-range approach to have it cut up into small commercial areas. It's really the gateway into Greenfield from Route 2, and to miss the green trees and the really very pretty drive-through, I think would be a mistake. You know, it is Greenfield, and it's, it would not be green anymore, in my estimation. I'm very much into having green open space and really saving it for the future. I don't think gas stations and fast food restaurants really do anything. We have enough of those in town, but we don't really need any more on the periphery of the French King Highway. Thank you.
Cool.
I've heard from a lot of Greenfield residents who are angry about that they don't have a Walmart that they want. Why do I have to drive to Athol or Havley? It's hard for me to imagine Walmart wanting to go there now. They're too busy fending off Amazon. I think of the man who bought the copycat printing shop on Main Street, Mr. Kim, I think. I asked him, I said, you're a smart businessman, what would you, what businesses would you open in Greenfield, particularly on Main Street in the empty lots? And he said, anything that you can't buy on the internet. It has to be food or service, because everything's changed. The other thing about the, I'm on record saying that I think the compromise, once the library got put on the ballot as a referendum issue, that it was only fair that the other half of the compromise be put on it. The city council, in its wisdom, decided to table that. But there's more to that compromise that we haven't talked about. Power was taken away from the planning board and given to the zoning board, and it really changed the balance of power within Greenfield government, and I think that's something we should look at again. Was that a wise decision? It was something that was done just to make a deal, and I think we've got an opportunity to open it up again.
Thank you. Christine?
I'd like to applaud the planning board for being prepared and doing your work ahead of time, and I think that that's how we're going to get along. I hear a lot of people say that we don't want garages and fast food chains, and I'm wondering why everybody assumes that has to be the case with that particular piece of land. Now, if we need to look at zoning, and we need to revamp it somewhat, and we need to set conditions for businesses coming in that are not paying, you know, the low wages, no benefit jobs and everything else, it's a good piece of land to be able to do those types of things. I've always thought that it should be developed and utilized. I do think big boxes are non-starters, because as was also pointed out, Amazon and Walmart are in competition with each other, and we do need to switch our thinking about what it is that we want in the town. I hear a lot of people talk about downtown. There's some very, very fine places in downtown, some good businesses in downtown, but there's also how many pizza shops, how many nail salons. If you are going to be too restrictive with zoning in certain places, then it's only going to be certain businesses that can fit into those slots. I am in favor of rezoning. I always have been, I always will be, because I see it as a valuable piece of land on which we can put our best foot forward, and we can show people coming into Greenfield what we're capable of doing as far as commerce. Why do we all have to go to, you know, out of town to get goods, to get restaurants? Again, to go back to the original question, I'm in favor of the zoning. Thank you.
Thank you. James?
This is an issue that's near and dear to my heart, because back in, back in the day, I actually, maybe people remember, I ran for selectman back in the mid-'90s, just after we voted very, very narrowly against Walmart. And I decided, you know what, if we're not going to have Walmart, what can we agree on, and how can we move forward? And that's what really prompted me to get involved in town government and try to solve the problems. I ended up serving on the planning board on a, because I had run on a pro-planning agenda, and in 1996, maybe some of you will remember, we had a fantastic opportunity to work together. We pulled together the warring factions, people on both sides of this big box thing, we called it consensus '96. And then after that, we came up with a list of priorities that we could agree on as a community, and then after we finished that, I ran for town council and served in Precinct 3, where I was living at the time. And we were actually able to implement some of the recommendations that came out of that. So it shows me that Greenfield can find a common ground when it comes to economic development. If you don't want to have restaurants and gas stations and all the rest, that's fine, but having the land just sitting there, not being used, we do not have that luxury today to just let land be underutilized, because as we've all said, you know, the taxpayers need some relief. And if we don't use all of the resources that we have at our disposal, that's the reason why. Not because we're paying for a new library, but because we're just not using the tools.
Thank you. Michael?
Yes, I'm also very much in favor of development on the Route 2 overlay. Development in town in general is very necessary, as I think we all know, and to make it the easiest as possible for any business to come into this town and want to put down roots here, I'm on board for that, because the fewer restrictions we have... to put down roots here, I'm on board for that because the fewer restrictions we have, the more likely people are going to look at this place. And that doesn't mean that we can't be conscientious about what we put where, per se. But there are a lot of different businesses that might not even have been thought of yet that all of a sudden, they would like to try to develop, but they're not going to fall in line with the high restrictions we may have due to wherever it's zoned. So I think really working on changing the zoning and utilizing the Planning Board's recommendations for what types of businesses we would like to have come in there, somewhat commercial, and, you know, even if they end up being, I know there's been talk about some like industrial going in, but I think it would be all right to put a different kind of greeting, though I like the green idea with the trees and stuff. We also have a tire bay right down the street from that. So, I mean, we can do it in a tasteful way and still invite people off of Route 2 before they jump on 91 into our town, and then, you know, we could utilize advertising in such a way that would bring them into downtown where we could also get businesses that wouldn't be of that nature. And then people could come and eat and spend their money and generate more revenue for the town.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Vern?
Like I said, I grew up in this town. Main Street used to be the busiest place around. You had more stores, more business right around Main Street. You had manufacturing, and everybody was welcome. Every business was welcome into town. I retired in 1989. I was hoping to have Saruzi Company build on it in the Mackin Sand Pep. It didn't happen. It's been in court ever since. And Greenfield's got to be welcome to every business, no matter whether it's a manufacturing business, which could go into on Adams Road by the Mackin property. But you've got to be welcome to any business, no matter what it is. There was a business that wanted to come into town, but because of the high taxes, they couldn't afford it. You've got to have a business that's willing to knock down the taxes instead of not letting business in, that's going to, our taxes are only going to go up. And that's why I voted for the overlay. Because no matter whether it's a small business or a bigger business, the only way you can do is let businesses come into town and appreciate what they do.
Thank you. Edward?
Thank you. I, too. I'm for the French King overlay. It only makes sense to us. Right now, we drive up and down those pieces of property right now, and what do we have? We have nothing that's contributing to our tax base. Be it big or small, whomever wants to move in there, it would only make sense. We could put restrictions on how much greenery they need to have in their frontage. I'm sure I've seen it before in many cases, in many developments within the town, that they've been told, you know, you have to have so many bushes, you need to have so much frontage. We can put those conditions on them building there. As far as gas stations and restaurants, I've heard that rumor. I don't know where that rumor's out there. I don't see people, I don't see the gas station people knocking down the doors to build another gas station out there. Could we put some specialty shops out there? Yep. Could we put a little Peter Harris clothing store out there, strip mall kind of thing? Yep. Are they paying $25 an hour? No. But are they going to be contributing to our tax base? Yes. Is a vacant building being used, not being used on that parcel of property contributing the maximum amount of money to our tax base? No. It's time to improve and build that area up with some restrictions. We want to make it green so we can make it aesthetically pleasing when people come off the road. And God forbid, they decide to come downtown and get something that they couldn't get at one of those specialty shops. Or if it's lunchtime and they go to one of the restaurants on Main Street. Or God forbid, they need gas and they need to stop at one of the gas stations on Main Street or Federal Street to get that gas. That's how we draw people into town. We draw people into town by having shops that they can come to, not by having vacant lots.
Thank you. Question three. How can the city continue to afford the services it provides? And that will be you, Tana.
I'm concerned about Greenfield's incurring too much debt. In 2018, Greenfield was $34 million in debt, which is 27% higher than similar towns. At the same time, our median household income in 2018 was $47,821, which is 36% lower than the state median income, which is the household combined. We seriously need to take a look at how we can increase our tax base without continually increasing our homeowners' taxes. We need to encourage new businesses into our community that will pay living wage jobs. These businesses will help fund our taxes, but also these living wage jobs will help our tax base, too. We should be talking with UMass about information technology, job innovators, and talking with our county CDC about local job prospects and training. When we decide to rezone property, we should make sure we're doing it to increase revenue that we can in turn use to support our infrastructure. We need to maintain our infrastructure, to maintain our roads, water, sewer, et cetera. However, we need to be smarter about how we increase our tax base.
Thank you. Norm?
Well, like I said in my opening remarks, we just cannot continue the way we've been doing in terms of relying on residential property tax, one tax system. We need to have a dual tax system of some sort. We can't always rely on trying to cut the budget to make ends meet. It's just not going to work. Our costs are constantly rising, and we just have to really face the reality is that we need a tax that's equitable. Right now, it puts too much emphasis on the property tax, the residents' property tax. And we have to come up with a way to not hurt the small business people, but at the same time, have those who actually are not paying their fair share of taxes pay more. So I believe that we need to look into some sort of split tax. Thank you.
Phil?
Well, I'm going to continue my argument for growing the economy rather than trying to cut back. I have two ideas. One, I've already mentioned, taking advantage of the great bandwidth we have. I'll geek out a little bit here. What's unusual about Greenfield is that they have the same bandwidth up as they have down. Comcast will sell you whatever you want down, but they sell you a little tiny pipe up because they figure you're just choosing between websites. Software developers make huge programs. They send them up to the cloud at night. They bring them down in the morning. They need this kind of bandwidth. It's also a great kind of business because it kind of fills in the empty spaces in town. These are people who you don't need to build a new factory to house a software developer. The other idea is, we still have the remains of a precision metal industry here. Greenfield tap and die is never coming back, but there are precision metal shops around that have some opportunities now that Silicon Valley is under a lot of pressure to bring parts manufacturing back to China. I used to ride bikes with a guy named Rob Savage, who was very proud of his metal machine shop. He always had the most precise tools. He said he got a call from Apple. He says, "They call you, you don't call them." They wanted him to build a little broach to make a clip for their devices. He said, "I could have done it. I had the machinery, but they wanted a billion of them, and he just couldn't do it." But it wouldn't take too many small jobs like that to really boost this town. So those are a couple of ideas.
Christine?
Thank you. Well, the system, the way it exists right now is heavy on taxpayers. It always has been. I am not an advocate of a split tax rate. I believe that businesses need some encouragement to come to Greenfield, and there are always types and kinds of state programs that can help to be attractive to bringing more businesses into Greenfield, businesses of any kind, actually. What bothers me a lot right now personally is if we want to get more, what do I want to say, more traction with money that we are spending right now, because there's just so much money to go around, I think a key to it is accountability. What I mean by accountability is every dollar we spend of taxpayers' money should be actually well accounted for, well documented, and people who are employees of the town, people who are doing business with the town, we are buying equipment for the town. I need to be not so much convinced, but I need to be shown that we are doing the very best we possibly can as we all work towards a goal of helping Greenfield sustain itself. There are different kinds of grants. There are federal grants. There are state grants. Those things are very meaningful for capital projects and pieces like that. But again, the tax base are residential homeowners paying property tax. It's the way it is. It's the way it is in Massachusetts. I think we can have better accountability. Thank you.
Thank you. James?
We've been having this same debate. We've probably just jumped into a time machine and went back 25 years or so because we've been trying to answer the same question for decades, and the answers are the same. I do want to address with deference to you about the split tax rate issue. Early in my government career, I worked as an administrator out in Irving. And Irving is a perfect community to have a tax rate, a split tax rate, because they have one utility out there that pays the lion's share. They have most of the value in town. So it makes perfect sense to have a split tax rate in Irving. But if you do that in a community like Greenfield where there isn't that big 800-pound gorilla here, it's going to place a huge burden on the businesses that are already here. Now, does that mean we can't look at it? Maybe we can after we use the resources we have, and maybe this is a discussion we need to have. What kind of a facility or development could we envision as a town for the eastern entrance of town, which is where a lot of our developable land is? Maybe it's something that will work for that, and then we can have that discussion, but until then, I would not support it. So, and I think I've already kind of summed up my views on this issue, that, you know, we have to do something. We have to have a dialogue, and it really, I think, starts with bringing the Warring parties together and say, "We know where we differ. That's all over the newspaper. But let's see if there's something that we can agree on and develop a plan to move forward," and that's what I'm going to do. Consensus 2020.
Thank you. Thank you. Michael?
Yeah, there's certainly a lot of methods that could be used to bring development into town to help lower the tax base. I agree with Phil on the idea that software developers or things of that nature don't require a whole lot of space. They would be great candidates for utilizing our empty fronts on Main Street or the empty upstairs on Main Street. I would also push for a bigger access to, like, the walkability of downtown, whether it ended up being utilizing some of the bike lane ideas that have been out there. Increase the FRTA schedule. Get people that can get downtown a lot easier because just like if you make it easy for businesses to come in, if you make it easy for people to get around, then they can, and then they can spend money appropriately in those ways. We, I agree with Ed on the greenscape kind of limitations we could put on the planning for any development that is done over on the overlay. But I think it's really crucial that we get people off the highway or the people who are living in our neighboring towns, that they should be coming to us. We are the capital, you know, seat of our county, and we should be representing the commerce and the industry, which would boom our tax base as well. And I think that there are definitely good ideas coming from both sides of the aisle. And if, as Jim was just saying, if you can pause for a second on your differences and figure out what you have that's alike, or take something from one's idea, mull it around, and then represent it in a different fashion, it could work for the common good.
Thank you, Michael. Vern?
We've got a great company called G-Set right here in town that's developing. And we need developers like G-Set to go around and make it so it's less expensive for getting computer lines coming into town. But we've got to have a business that'll help bring the taxes down. Like, they're going to cut down a lot on taxes on Internet and stuff like that. But to really get the taxes down, we need to be welcome. I'm a retired, disabled veteran. My taxes are cut because of that, but it's still too high. And the way to get taxes down is to develop more welcome business, whether it's downtown Greenfield or because you've got the stores downtown that are paying high taxes. My wife tried to start a business here in Greenfield, but the taxes were so high, she couldn't afford it. And you want to have taxes lower to bring people in because we've got a great high school that we just built, and that's kids wanting to come into Greenfield. They come in, their parents are looking for that. So that's a way we can increase business as well be welcome.
Thank you, Vern. Edward?
This always seems like this is the multimillion-dollar question, is how can we cut our taxes? Our taxes are always too high. Believe me, I hate paying my property tax. I hate paying the federal government, and I hate paying the state, but we all have to do it, and we have to find ways to make it happen. I believe that Greenfield has several opportunities, and with just all the open spaces that we have, we need to stop beating these projects to death with a club and actually put them out there and let people build. Let people come to Greenfield. Let these projects happen. I do believe that, as Chris has mentioned, I think that we need to look into our budgets, look into our schools, our DPW, our police, our fire. Make sure that these budgets are being utilized and every dollar is being spent where the dollars are really needed. I'd like to see also all the departments kind of look for federal and the, all the departments kind of look for federal and state money. I mean, I mean, I know at the fire department, I wrote two very successful grants and, and received money that the town didn't have to buy our equipment for, that we, that we were in desire need for. I would, I would like to see more of the departments get involved with that. I believe that, that, that there has to be tons of grants from the state and federal level for the school systems out there that, that we're just not grasping. I mean, does that mean that we need a professional grant writer or two? I, I think that, I think that might be an area where we could save a good chunk of money. And if we're, and if I'm wrong, I'm wrong. But I believe that there's money out there that we're just not grasping a hold of, that it's going to other communities because they have people out there that know how to find it and utilize it and make it work and write the grants so we get them.
Thank you. Jenny?
You're right, Ed. This is always the biggest hot topic. First of all, I have to say I'm not in favor of the split tax rate. I think that would be very harmful to our businesses. So I think we need to try a tri-fold approach to bring more tax revenue to the city of Greenfield. First, a comprehensive, thorough reassessment of property values. Secondly, the, for our school budget, I think the new Student Opportunity Act, which will be putting, will be changing the share of what, and the formula of how funding is done for Western Massachusetts. It's something that we have to push our legislators to make sure that that is passed. Joe Comerford and three other senators brought that forward. And if that were passed, especially with the census coming up, and we know that the numbers are going to be changing after the census, Eastern Mass is growing by 2.4 to 4 percent and our population is probably going to remain stagnant. So we need to push our legislators to make sure that that happens. Lastly, we have to capitalize on what we have, and I think we are doing a great job with that. And we have to do it even more so. Our economic, our Economic Development Office, they gain billions of dollars writing grants. There is a new empty storefront initiative that is just coming to Massachusetts. And our grant writers will be out there grasping it every minute. So we have to do everything we can to get those businesses to come and stay here. That's it.
Thank you. And now the candidates will give their closing statements and we'll begin with Norm.
Well, I encourage you all to get your friends and neighbors to vote on November 5th. I hope to see you all at the polls and thank you.
Okay. Phil?
Well, I am in a competitive race, so why vote for me? The, I don't know, I'm smart. I'm a quick study. I've been around. I know a little about how to, how things get done and I know how to get things done. And I'll tell a quick story. I live right up against Highland Park and I walk my dog there every day. And I see what Vern, Vern sees, which is a wonderful lake that used to be a skating, hundreds of people used to skate there. And it's, it's silting up, it's eutrophying, it's turning into a wetland. I got myself on the, on the mayor's committee to, to figure out what to do about Highland Pond. And we found out pretty quickly that the cost of getting over the environmental hurdles, it was gonna be millions of dollars. And Greenfield's got bigger fish to fry right now. But we did learn that the pond had a high bacteria count, a lot of coliform bacteria. It could have been coming from the houses up the road, but my theory was it was coming from the dog poop. So I did a poop count. When the snow melted and I counted 1.8 poops per meter, and on the strength of that, with Chrissy Moore's help in the rec department, I asked for a poop bag dispenser at every entrance to the park to send a signal about how the town felt about the park. We got one, but it made a huge difference. That path is almost totally poop free. And, you know, there are people who opposed it. A, a local politician, I won't name her, thought, said, I bring my own bags. I put the poop in my pocket, in my coat pocket, and I bring it home. That solves the problem. She missed the point. If you make it easy to comply, people will do it. And without breaking this metaphor in half, I think that's how I feel about bringing people to the town. Make the town a place where, that has the stuff that new families need and they will come.
Thank you. Christine?
I, I don't know if I can continue after. Very happy to have the opportunity to be here before everyone this evening, to everybody in the viewing audience. I can't impress upon you enough the importance of getting involved in your local government and being an active and educated voter in Greenfield. You have more impact on your life in our local community than you do in a presidential election. So let's talk about what we need to get done in Greenfield. And I'm looking forward to serving on the city council to help with that progress. It would be my privilege to serve everybody here again as the city councillor. And I ask for your support and your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. James?
It's been a heck of a year for, for me. When I think about what I was doing last year this time, I was trudging through the streets of Miami, Homestead and Florida City, knocking on 100 doors a day, asking people, just please make a plan to vote. Not telling them who to vote for, just voting matters, you know? And it worked. We got over 7,000 commitments to vote from, from people who are inconsistent voters in the, in midterm elections. And as a result, the candidate that we were kind of hoping that they would cast their votes for won by 4,500 votes. So I left Florida and decided to come back up here because my father, Dick Henry's health, had started to decline and decided this was the time that I needed to be close to my family. And as soon as I got back here, people who I hadn't seen for a long time started talking to me, saying, Jim, you know, you really should think about running for the council again. We could really use your voice of reason on the council. And that's really what, when I, when I was thinking about whether I was gonna stay in this race or not, it was those people who were talking to me saying this. I said, you know what, I'm gonna finish what I started here. So if people want to vote for me, I will be honored and I will serve with every bit of enthusiasm and energy that I have. And if not, congratulations to all of you. Because I really, I'm very sincere. We need to have citizen government needs, volunteer citizens who want to make a difference in their town. And I applaud all of you. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you for the opportunity and thank you all for, for coming here as well. A lot of people have asked me, why, why would you want to get involved in this, especially right now? And I, I ask myself that every day. It's definitely a tough time right now, especially with the, the current sentiment of the, of the country. And I, I would really just like to take a little bit of this time to encourage people to be decent. The way that is being portrayed to deal with differences in the national level is not the way that we need to, to treat each other. You never know. If it didn't come to this way with social media and, and the way we communicate now, most people probably wouldn't know what you thought about a lot of issues anyway. And you got along with them fine. We're all still neighbors. We all live in the same community. We're all going for the exact same goal, which is, you know, to live a decent life and be prosperous and not struggle. And hopefully included in that is to help out those who, those who do need a little bit of help. And I, when I, when I was standing outside for the, the preliminary election and waving, one thing that really struck me was, I was, I was right on the corner and probably the first person that most people through that entrance saw, standing there waving, smiling, pretty much the entire day. And I was really, really taken aback by some who had just turned their head. And I know that I'm not super well-known in this town. And I'm like, I don't think I could have really crossed anybody that badly. It's just smile and wave, you know? It's really the least you can do to, to be decent. And I think there's a lot of good that can come from, from pushing forward across, across the aisle. I encourage as much fluidity with that as possible and to just, just, just check the other stuff at the door. Whoever's, you know, whoever's sitting on the council across from you, they might not, you know, like the same food as you. But you still get along with them. You still, you know, can make things happen for everybody else in Greenfield that would make a much more positive impact going forward. I, I really would love the opportunity to serve on the council and to help our city. I think I've got a pretty good mind for it. I, I love any puzzles. So this is definitely a conundrum that I would, I would be willing to take on headstrong. So hopefully you'd vote for me on November 5th. And if not, at least get out and vote, because that's important. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Vern?
In four years, I've learned a lot about finances, what other people want in town. It's hard, a hard job to get things to be happening in town. I've lived on Barton Road. I drove up and down Barton Road. And I hadn't been tired in 30 years. So I had a, I pushed and got it. Now Barton Road, one of the best roads in town. And I grew up on Lydon Road. And Nations Mall's Bridge had been going down the, down, kept falling apart and falling apart. And to get something like that done, you gotta push to have anything done in town. And I just think the town is great. And to have a great town, you gotta have everybody on the council working together instead of one pulling against one another. And whether you vote for me or vote for Ed, you're, you're gonna have the town going forward. And I just think it's great to have worked with, for the town. And whether I re-elected or not, I'm gonna still go to every single meeting so I'll know what's happening in, in this town. Because I enjoy it. Otherwise, I would have never came back after 21 years in the service. I came home. And that's, this is my home and I want to see it prosper. And how it's gonna prosper is have all the town councilmen or women work together and be willing to work together and not taking anybody apart.
Edward?
I'd like to take this opportunity to thank everybody for tuning in tonight and, and spending your evening listening to, to all of us. If you disagree or agree with us, that's great. Just remember to get out and vote. Your vote counts. Everybody's vote counts. I too was opposed with the question, what are you doing? And I said, you know, I, I, I worked as a community servant for 30 years, given to this community as a firefighter. I took a break for three years because I really needed it. I'll probably need a break. If I get elected, I'll probably need a break after four years for another 30 years after that. But it'd be my privilege to serve the town of Greenfield. I'm not one to sit on the sidelines and watch things happen. I want to be in the game. I want to make things happen. I want to feel like that, that I've contributed. You get nothing done by sitting at home and complaining or, or complaining to your friends. So I hope that the people in precinct one give me the chance to represent them, to make their voices heard. I believe that if I'm elected to the town council, that I represent precinct one. Your opinions matter to me. In the seven years that I was in management with the Greenfield Fire Department, I learnt one very important thing, that you need to get back to people. People want to hear from you. People elect you. People want, want to hear from you. I will guarantee you that I will get back to you in a very timely fashion, that, that your concerns matter to me. And thank you for tuning in.
Thank you. Jenny?
Let me hand you where I started with a little player. She thought that I wasn't fast enough to win the race. Well, this isn't a 50-yard dash. It's a marathon. And a marathoner practices and prepares and has their eye on the goal. I've prepared. I have the proven experience and the proven commitment to this town. I bring great skills and familiarity with the town budget and an uncanny ability to work with others. Additionally, you may recognize my face from serving at the harvest supper or volunteering at the senior center, the YMCA, the hospital gift shop, the Arbers, the adult daycare center. For those of you with insomnia, you may recognize my face from being a guardian of the ice sculptures from midnight until 3:30 a.m. There were many of us that were there guarding those ice sculptures so that you could enjoy them for the rest of the winter carnival. You chose to turn on the TV tonight. You chose this channel and to listen to this debate. That shows your interest and commitment to Greenfield. You wanted to hear what we had to say. I want to hear what you have to say and to bring your voice to the table. It would be an honor to serve you. I show up. I participate. And I'm ready. I ask for your vote on November 5th. Thank you.
Thank you. Tana?
I believe more than ever, our city needs to focus on attracting living wage jobs instead of chasing entry level service jobs from national chains that just displaced local businesses. According to census data, Greenfield's per capita income at 27,000 ranks 313th out of 351 cities. We must do better. We need revenue so our schools can be fully financed with a curriculum that includes music, sports and arts. We have to expand our housing options for the elderly and disabled and cut down on the waiting list that now lasts one to five years. Our tax rate is one of the highest in the county, but actual tax bills are offset by, because our home valuations are still relatively low. Homeownership and rental housing stocks must remain affordable. As an employer, the city needs to be sure wages are adequate to attract and retain good workers. That goes for our teachers, police, fire and DPW. We need to promote green energy in all our buildings and encourage homeowners to do the same. We cannot pave over what open space we have left. My opponent and I differ on strip commercial development. I don't want more gas stations and bottom wages that force families to work two and three jobs. Our tool industry was destroyed by large corporations that sent jobs to Mexico and China. We need to look for industrial and internet, internet based technology to build our middle class in Greenfield. We need to make smarter development decisions that lift up our per capita income in the future. I see a stronger Greenfield in the years ahead. And thank you for your vote in precinct three on November 5th.
Thank you. Well, that concludes tonight's forum. Thank you, candidates, for your participation. Audience, I believe they deserve a round of applause. And thank you also to GCTV for airing this forum live. The station will also be re-procasting the program over the next few weeks and making it available on its website, which is gctv.org. Also look for election coverage in our newspaper. And tune in Monday, October 7th at 7:00 p.m. for our mayoral forum, which will have a debate-like format. We've invited Roxanne Wieder-Gardner and Sheila Gilmore, who will be on the ballot because they won the pro- because they won the preliminary elections, and Rickett Alice, who lost but is running a write-in campaign. We are hoping for a lively discussion that night. See you then.
Thank you for watching GCTV's coverage of the 2019 City Council Candidate Forum.